One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move to the roll call if you can call it please.
Mr. Alt?
Here.
Mr. Beistall? Mr. Benn?
Here.
Dr. Fike?
Here.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Here.
Mrs. Love?
Here.
Mr. Polakowski?
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here. Just to note here, Mr. Beistall is healthy, has a cold, and will not be here tonight. Join us next week. Okay, eight present and one absent, and we will move to citizens' comments. And Dr. Fike has a comment for us tonight.
Thank you. I wanted to speak tonight on behalf of the citizens of the school district. Believe it or not, I actually have some friends, and I received a number of calls about why they can't see our school board meetings on television. So I began to monitor it for myself, and we had a special meeting, I believe it was on December 10th, and 14 days later that meeting still wasn't on television, except for one time when I found it on at 2:00 in the afternoon. I called Peggy Teresin three times, and she was wonderful. She tried to help me every single time. She tried to do something until finally I just called and said, "That's all right. Forget about it." So before I go any further, can you, Dr. Molnar, can you explain to me the process by which it goes from this camera to where our people, our taxpayers, can see it on television?
Sure. The first thing that happens generally the morning after a board meeting, I put it into a VCR-DVD recorder in my office, and I record it from the VCR onto a DVD. Once that happens, I put the DVD into my computer. I do a process called ripping.
How about ripping?
Ripping, R-I-P-P-I-N-G, and I rip it into an MP4 file. That MP4 file is then uploaded onto our YouTube channel, and is almost always live on YouTube by 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock the day after the board meeting. At that point in time, I call Mr. Lee, and he works the board meeting into the schedule of other things that he has to put on to the VCR at any given time. We have a single VCR that holds one tape, so it's programmed as such. So that would be the process.
Okay. I had two calls that people tried to watch it on YouTube, and the audio occurred originally, and then it faded out, and you couldn't hear anything more after a period of time. Do you know why that happened?
Didn't know it did happen, ma'am.
Okay. Can you explain, Jack, then, why people couldn't see the meeting of December 10th?
I think I just did.
But they couldn't see it. I mean, you did all that, but then it wasn't on.
You mean it wasn't on Armstrong Cable?
Right.
It was put on Armstrong Cable, and Mr. Lee came down and put the cassette into the player and programmed it after whatever else was on before it.
When I turned it on, there was a blue screen with Christmas music.
Oh, the other thing I can tell you is we've been having difficulty with our Channel 39 system for the last couple of weeks, so it has been somewhat erratic in terms of whether or not it's working or not.
There you go. This is what I was trying to get at.
Yeah, okay, yeah. We've had to reboot that machine probably, what, pegging on a daily basis for every other day. So there have been some problems with that particular machine as well.
Dr. says a comment here, too.
I can add to that because, living just a couple hours down from administration building, when the power goes out at our house, it goes out there, and when the power goes out, it messes up their thing because when I go and look at the Scotty Channel, it's blue, as you said. So when the power goes out, and it frequently does, we were warned even before I bought our house that that happens a lot there, but when the power goes out, it shuts their machine down until they reboot it because the whole channel's down, so it's just blue, like you're saying.
Is anybody monitoring this, Jack?
We monitor during the day.
You know, we spend a couple hundred thousand dollars a year for IT people, and it would seem to me that these people could be checking on this. I turned on the television to look at the meeting. I think it was in October, and they were playing a concert from April. It had the date on it, you know, an April concert. I'm just not, and my friends are confused. They don't understand why they can't turn it on and see the meeting within 48 hours of when it was on. And you're telling me you do all this stuff, but there's some breakdown somewhere.
Very well.
Very good. Dr. Fike, I think you've stated the concern very well. Thank you. And maybe to add to it, when there is a breakdown, call the office, and I'm sure they'll get in touch with the IT people.
Three times I've called them.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that up. We do want the sessions to be public. But having said that, we need a short executive session, and I would entertain a motion to enter into a new.
Make a motion.
Kaufman makes a motion. It is seconded by Miss Rhodes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Seconded by Mr. Benns. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign, and we are reconvened. It carries. Let us move to the minutes.
At the voting meeting next week, you will be asked to approve the minutes of the December 3rd and the December 10th meeting, and you will notice in front of you there is a corrected version of the December 10th minutes.
Is that something we'll talk about tonight, in our...
Could, go ahead, Mrs. Kaufman, if you want to raise a question. I don't think we're going to just, but raise a question on, if you have a question on one.
I just wanted, just to clarify, I see that we changed that "seek proposals" and not actually get the, authorized to get the audit. We're just seeking proposals to see how much it would cost if we do want to do that.
That's correct.
Right.
In the request for proposal, which actually we just finished writing about a day ago, it does indicate that the district reserves the right to choose either to go forward or not.
And you have those numbers for us, or we go into that?
I do not have those numbers at this point. The ad was sent to the paper, but it took a while. The request for proposal is actually rather technical, and it took a little while to put together.
Okay.
And we didn't want to advertise it because we had some sort of consent in terms of, you know, the scope of the project.
That should be noted, and will be addressed in due time. Your motion to accept the minutes?
No.
Oh, no voting tonight. Good, good, good. Let's move on. We'll vote next week.
All right.
Treasuries report.
Yeah, under Finance, by the way, I do have several other items that I'll be bringing up under Finance that didn't make it onto the agenda based on the timing this week. But you will be asked to approve the November 2012 Treasuries Report and the Bills Pay Rule for December 2012. That's under Finance. Another item I have for you is, we had talked several weeks ago, someone was here from Piper Jaffray talking about the bond refinancing. We would ask that next week you entertain a resolution to continue with the refunding or the refinancing of the 2005 series bond. Basically, what's going to happen there is the term of the repayment will not change. However, due to the very favorable interest rates that are now available, the debt service will be significantly reduced. And if you look on page 7 of the Piper Jaffray document, you will see that our savings would be in the neighborhood of $750,472 by doing the refinancing. And my understanding is that that is the net savings. But I will make sure for next meeting to understand if that is before or after we share the savings with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. But at this point in time, the number we have is $750,472 in savings.
What will it cost us to get that?
It will be approximately the same as it was for the last refinancing.
$180,000?
I believe that would be the case.
So these savings don't kick in, they kick in at 8,000 this year in the 40s, 8,000 to 10,000, right?
I believe so, yes.
So what we're saving is like 40-some thousand dollars a year?
It appears that way, yes.
And what are you doing with that money?
As we did the last time, I would like it to offset debt service, as we did with the last refinancing.
Okay, and that lowers our payments, right?
Correct.
But it doesn't take anything off the mortgage, right?
I don't believe it does. Actually, I'm going to have someone here next week from Piper Jaffray that can answer these questions a lot better than I, but I'll do my best. If you have others?
I thought I read in here where it says again it's 8-point-some million, and I thought it was 10.
It says front page here?
No. We just bought it tonight, Jack, and I just couldn't read it.
That letter we just bought tonight?
No, it's in that document. It's in there. We have a resolution here, and maybe you read it, you wrote it. Do you want to explain this to me? I'm not smart enough to understand this. Do you want to explain this resolution to me? Because what I can see is like 14 pages long.
I'm sorry? I can't hear you.
Can you explain this to me, this resolution?
I got that yesterday, and I don't have time to read.
It says you wrote it. I'm sorry.
Are you talking about the bond resolution?
Yeah.
Which resolution are you talking about?
It says on the bottom here, Bond Council.
Is your name and Eckhart Siemens sharing a lot of this?
Cliff Pastel did.
No, this came from, this came from Cliff Pastel. Is that what you're talking about?
Okay, we haven't had a chance to look at it.
No, I was quite busy the last two days.
That's all right. And when are we supposed to vote on this?
Next week.
Next Thursday.
And we just bought it tonight.
Yes, I bought it yesterday. Yes.
Last time we paid 180, and we saved over 400,000.
Correct.
This time we're going to pay around the same thing, 180, and save 700,000.
Correct.
But the one thing we didn't do is entertain any other companies to see if we could have got a lower rate than 180,000. We didn't do that, though, right?
We did not do that. If you remember, there was a comparison that we had given to you that indicated that we were in pretty close proximity to other...
Yeah, we had that chart.
Let's do this. You have a week to think about it. This is the proposal. They did good service for us last year, and so we can vote it up or down next week.
Please, Mike, how do we, how do we understand this? I mean, I can take it home and read it till it comes home, but how do I ask a question?
What question do you wish to ask?
Well, I just scanned it, and somewhere it says 8.7 million. I thought they were costing 10. Maybe I'm not, maybe they're wrong. I understand there's 14 pages on the spreadsheet.
Ah, exactly.
It's the cover sheet.
Is there a cover sheet on it here?
The cover sheet says 8.7 million.
Again, I'll have someone here next week that can answer those questions.
Where's that?
Yes, we're, Piper Jaffray, up top, we had, as part of our...
It's in a letter dated January 3rd.
Oh, there it is. Okay. So we're not refinancing 10 million. We are refinancing 8,775,000, right?
That would appear to be what the letter says, Dr. Fike, yes.
Is there a reason we're not doing the full 10 million, or?
Again, I'll have somebody here to answer this question.
I didn't hear Mike's question. Well, the 8.75, 8.775 million is the principal amount of the bond, I believe. Now, if you add in the total interest payments, then that number goes up. And I think that's part of the reason for the spread, or the difference in numbers.
We asked that question last time, yeah.
Because if you look at page 5 of the booklet that came out, Bond Debt Service, it looks to be about 10,637 under the column Net Principal Debt Service. But again, we'll have someone here either from our Bond Council or our investment banker here to go into detail with you next week.
Very good. We will, we will look at that in more detail and bring it in for a vote next week. School Improvement Plan.
Mr. Prochek and Dr. Stock, please. Well, before we go to School Improvement Plan, we missed something. There's a couple of things under Finance, if I may, Mr. Stock, if they're not on your schedule. I believe Mrs. Thorson passed out a report to you that's entitled Exit Interview, and that is the information that was shared with us in terms of where our fund balance is and some of the recommendations that were made by the CPA firm. See, you have that in the packet as an informational item.
Can we discuss it?
You may.
Okay. The fund balance is comprised of committed to sign and unassigned categories. Now, when you read the PSBA bulletin, it says there are four categories of fund balance. This one says three. Okay, so it says we have $1,389,300, which is committed to pay off the bonuses that we gave teachers to retire.
Actually, it's the retirement incentives.
So that is, according to that article in PSBA, that's not part of the fund balance because it's already been spent. I'm just wondering by what the book said. Then it says $1,511,875 assigned to capital purposes. To balance the 2012-13 budget and $1,511,000, what capital purposes? Maybe I'm not reading this right.
The 1.1 million that was assigned to balance the 2013 budget had to do with the raising of the junior high school, the building of the parking lot, the building of the maintenance, that whole project, all right? Assigned to capital purposes, one of the things that you are allowed to assign fund balance to is future capital improvements as opposed to unassigned. Okay, so unassigned is money that can be used at the board's discretion. The administration has the purview to assign certain monies that can only be used for capital projects, and that million five is assigned to that purpose.
What is that capital project?
We don't have one at the moment. It's a savings account for a capital project.
Okay, we don't have one.
For example, the roof blows off tomorrow. You need a million five to fix it. Now it's, now it's going to the roof.
Okay. So that means it's not available for anything else?
Not at the present time.
So the board could, could move that around.
Actually, actually, the assigned administration can move it at its discretion.
Okay. That, Dr. Fike, just to start, I think we have allocated to that fund over the years as a kind of a savings account for the fund balance.
Does the fact that it's separated impact the amount of money you're making on that, the interest rate at the bank?
No, it's only separated.
Our availability to get it?
It's separated on the books.
Okay, and is the availability to get it any different?
No.
No, so it really could be one big lump sum, one big pot.
So we have $1.8 million, which is unassigned and available for daily operational needs of the district. So would you say that's our actual fund, our working fund balance is 1.8?
That depends on what you want to call our working fund balance. According to the CPAs who know a lot more than I do, they're telling me that as of June 30th, our fund balance is at 5,939,739, and then they provided a breakdown as to what you folks committed, what administration assigned, and what is unassigned. And if you remember from your reading about unassigned fund balances, you need to keep, I believe it's under 8% of your general operating budget in an unassigned fund balance. You can't have a large amount of money there, so that's why we assign to capital projects.
Well, you keep the unassigned down so that you can raise taxes above and beyond?
No, you keep the unassigned down because that's the law.
Okay, but then that allows you to raise taxes according to the exceptional, exceptional realities through which you can apply.
Would that be true? That we could say, Mar, we want to designate?
I never actually put it together in that fashion, Mr. Alt, so I don't know.
But technically, you could do that as an argument. You could say there's 2 million committed to capital projects, and you have about a million and a half, so we have to raise taxes.
I categorically do not believe that is the case for this board.
I didn't say it was, Lee, but I said you could do that, though.
Right, right.
I'm not saying anybody's ever entertained that.
I'm sorry, and I didn't mean, okay, I should. But from where I sit, I've watched this fund balance over, over the years, and there's a word out that I heard that we've spent down the fund balance to where we're down below a million or whatever. We were at 8 million. That's in round numbers there. We spent $1,840,000 for the capital projects that we've noted here. So right now, and we spent 178,000 last year in operating loss. So right now, the fund balance, as it's commonly understood, is at 5,900, almost 6 million. Now, we can argue is that high or low, or, for the, for the record, at least if I understood it correctly, the cipher and cipher, that would be about, that would be about average of what the districts are, our size in Pennsylvania, so I, whether, whatever that means. Is that, is that correct, is my understanding as well?
Okay, but I'm confused because it says here, "The current year decrease included $1,840,000 transfer to the capital project funds, and the fund decreased 2,180,000." That's okay, so we, we used 200,000 to pay our bills. Then it says here that you assigned another 1.5 million for capital purposes.
All right, I understand something. The capital projects fund that we put 1.8 million into is not part of the fund balance. We took money from the fund balance, we put it into a checking account at the local bank, and we wrote checks out of it. So that's the capital projects fund.
Right.
Okay, which left us with 1.5 million in the fund balance, which is available for use for capital projects.
How do we get that number, Jack? I guess that's what I can't figure. How do you come up with a million and a half?
Well, you had to put the motion on the floor to commit money for retirement incentives.
Right.
Okay, so you remember doing that, right? And then there's a statute that says your uncommitted fund balance has to be below 8%, I believe it is. So we have a 7% unassigned amount or uncommitted, all right? So if you do the math and you take the 1.3 and the, and the 7%, that leaves about 1.5 that we can assign, and we assign that to capital projects. And again, I'm not a math whiz, Doc, you know that.
No, 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 no. It says 1,193,765 dollars was assigned to balance the 2012-13 budget and 1 million and a half to capital. The 212, that's the year we're in. We've assigned 1,200,000 to balance our budget in the year we're in. Is that right?
That may be for retirement incentives. I don't know. All right.
Other comments or questions? Ms. Kaufman, any comments there or questions? Your Chair of the Finance?
I just, this is the good time to talk about maybe for budgeting for next year. See, our budget, budget is in here. Maybe we could get together to have a date to meet, come up with a date to meet for a separate budget meeting. We have three more Thursdays to go. We have five Thursdays this month, so maybe come back and see which date's better for you, 17, 24, 31. Maybe we can figure out next week, come up with a date.
See nodding heads? Why don't you and Dr. Molnar get together and project, project a date or an option for us?
And the last item I have on Finance, and again, I apologize to you, some of these things came in today, I believe, but we did have a request for a tax exoneration, transferring taxable to exempt property lots 2 and 38 in Scottsdale Borough. Prior assessed values, $21,350, and this would be for an honorably discharged veteran in the Army that has service connected disability evaluated at 100%. So we would obviously recommend that we honor that exoneration request for property taxes that become due in honor after August 17, 2012.
Thank you. Let's move to, are you ready for comment, or?
No, we'll talk a little bit about Southmoreland Elementary next. Oh, I'm going to read the letter that we received, and then I'm going to ask Mr. Lee to talk a little bit. The letter reads, "Dear Mr. Lee, Principal, congratulations. Southmoreland Elementary School has been nominated by Pennsylvania for the 2013 National Blue Ribbon Schools Award. The National Blue Ribbon Schools Award highlights and gives recognition to both public and private elementary, middle, and high schools that are producing outstanding results for all students regardless of race or socioeconomic status. Schools recognized as National Blue Ribbon Schools are those that have demonstrated consistent excellence, and in some cases, those that have made progress in closed gaps in student achievement. The National Blue Ribbon Schools program is part of a larger U.S. Department of Education effort to identify and disseminate knowledge about best school leadership and instructional practices. Your school was nominated for the award based on one of two criteria, either exemplary high-performing schools, which are schools that are ranked among the state's highest performing as measured by their performance on the state assessment in the most recent year tested, or exemplary improving schools, and those are schools with at least 40% of their students from disadvantaged backgrounds that have made the most progress in improving student performance on state assessments in the most recent five years." It goes on to say, "For many schools, attaining National Blue Ribbon status and recognition is a realization of a long-held dream. There's much excitement in the school community, and the local media eagerly profile schools that attain that recognition. The schools are honored at an awards ceremony in Washington, DC in the fall, where each National Blue Ribbon School receives a plaque and a flag to signify its National Blue Ribbon School status. National Blue Ribbon Schools serve as models for other schools throughout the nation, and details of their achievements are shared on the U.S. Department of Education's website. The National Blue Ribbon Schools Award sets a standard of excellence for all schools striving for the highest level of achievement. Each year since 1982, the U.S. Department of Education has sought out schools where students attain and maintain high academic goals, including those that beat the odds. For many schools, a National Blue Ribbon School flag waving overhead has become a trademark of excellence, a symbol of quality recognized by everyone, from parents to policymakers in thousands of communities. The National Blue Ribbon Schools program sets a high standard that should represent a goal for all schools that strive for excellence. For the past 30 years, this prestigious program has honored more than 7,110 of America's most successful schools. For public schools, the U.S. Secretary of Education invites chief state school officers to nominate schools from their state that meet the National Blue Ribbon School recognition criteria. The secretary also invites the Council for American Private Education to nominate private schools that meet the same criteria. The National Department of, the Department of Defense, education activity, and the Bureau of Indian Education are also invited to nominate schools as well. As one of 13 outstanding schools nominated from Pennsylvania as deserving the National Blue Ribbon Schools Award, I invite you to submit an application to the U.S. Department of Ed by February 22, 2013." So of all the schools across the Commonwealth, 13 were invited to apply for this award. Southmoreland Elementary is one of them, and I'm really proud. Mr. Lee, Principal, do you have anything to add?
I just threw away page 1 and 2, what I was going to say, but anyway. And I've known about Blue Ribbon Schools for many years, and they, there was a time when you, any school could apply for that, but now they've changed that where you have to be nominated for that, to be applying for the award. So when I received the invitation right before the Christmas break, I had shared it with Dr. Scott, Dr. Molnar, and we got right to work to gather a committee of teachers to start working. We have till February 22 to complete the lengthy application. It's kind of reminded me of going back to the college days where there's like 12 or 13 essays and, and a lot of data scores that we have to put in there over the last five years. Very excited. put in there over the last five years. Very excited for this opportunity to share this award, if we get it, and I'm hoping we do. We get to, if we are chosen as one of the Blue Ribbon Schools, there's, we get to go to Wash- some of us get to go to Washington, D.C. to accept the award, and hopefully, that will come, and that'll take place next in the fall of 2013. Right now, we have a committee of teachers from the elementary school, and a couple of administrators are going to work on this award, and we hope that we can have a nice Blue Ribbon School. A National Blue Ribbon School is something that, you know, when I was student teaching years and years ago, one of the schools in the district that I was in had a Blue Ribbon School banner outside their school, and to this day, it's there, and people in the community, they look at that as a place of honor and so forth. So, hopefully, we will be able to, you know, show Southmoreland Elementary pride as we always do. So, thank you.
John, again, our congratulations to you, staff, and students.
Mr. Lee, Carrie, congratulations to your staff and students there on behalf of the award.
All right, Mr. Krawcheck and Dr. Scott will be presenting some information to you about our high school's school improvement plan. As you know, a high school will not make outward progress, and as such, we need to write a school improvement plan. So, Mr. Krawcheck and Dr. Scott and the team of teachers from the high school took part in some very extensive planning. They will share that information with you. We will ask, and we'll see it again under the business school improvement plan, if there are twice, because next meeting we will ask you to approve that plan, what the requirements is that are in order for the plan. Do you need this down there, sir?
Yeah.
I also want to take an opportunity to thank, congratulate, Mr. Lee and all the members of Southmoreland Elementary School for their selection as a Pennsylvania nominee for the National Blue Ribbon. Back in 1997, when I was a much younger administrator, I was part of a middle school in Maryland that received the National Blue Ribbon Award. And it was extremely, an extremely prideful thing, not only to be part of a high-functioning school that was recognized with the National Blue Ribbon, but also to be part of the application team. And it's a great learning experience to go through, a very intensive process, and we're getting ready to do that with Southmoreland Elementary School, and we really look forward to the work that will be involved in that application. So, in addition to that recent information about SES, you know, just recently, we learned that Southmoreland Middle School was a national breakthrough school from the National Association of Secondary School Principals, one of 10 schools in the nation so honored. And we're very proud of that. And tonight, we're here, maybe a little regrettably, to talk about the other, when things aren't going so well. And I say a little regrettably, because being a part of this team that worked on the school improvement plan for Southmoreland High School, that was a tremendous learning experience. And also, it was a wonderful opportunity, because the process forced us to take a very hard look at where our deficiencies lie, and put a plan of action in place that will address it and get us headed down the path that we need to be on. Every school that is identified in the Commonwealth as being in school improvement, you get to be in school improvement because you don't meet AYP targets for two consecutive years. Southmoreland High School's in school improvement one. The Commonwealth requires that we complete a plan that addresses those deficiencies. It's a very extensive plan, and having said that, I'm going to ask Principal Mr. Dan Krawcheck to talk about the plan and some of the specifics, and also the process that was used to complete the plan.
Thank you, Dr. Scott, and congratulations to my colleagues and staff members for all their successes this year, and appreciate your time and attention. Really, to break down the process for you here, as to what we did to put together a plan so that we can really reach our greatest potential at Southmoreland High School, and very confident that we are on that road. So, take an opportunity to describe that. In front of you, you have the output of that plan when it's put together. And the process, the way that this process works is mentioned, the Pennsylvania schools that were, all Pennsylvania schools required to submit this plan based on their 1112 AYP status, and we were required to do that by December 20. And we were required to do that through a program, which is called CP Web Application, through the Pennsylvania Department of Education. It's a very comprehensive program that sort of, where we can input data and input different pieces into it, which allows us really to streamline a lot of the process itself. The components of it are multifold. You have to provide a school profile, we have to select a team, we have to provide assurances that we will comply, develop, and implement. As a Title I school, we had 21 of those assurances, and we had to really check that we're going to be putting these together. Really, a comprehensive process of needs assessment, data analysis, and we presented, we're not going to go through all the data pieces, we have presented that information to you this school year. But through that, we understand that we had some accomplishments and we had some concerns. And you analyze your systems, you take a hard look, and have conversations about your systems in order to develop goals, in order to formulate strategies, formulation of an action plan, and then ultimately, through all this, what are we going to achieve, and what are going to be our achievement and performance targets. The planning team was put together, a number of people I'd like to make mention of here, as you can see, Dr. Scott, Mr. Clara, representing the central administration, myself, and Mrs. Saint Amont, the principals at Southmoreland High School, Mr. Ted Mizik, representing the guidance department, Ms. Jean Champlain, special education teacher, Ms. Carrie Bisher, who is here with us this evening, make recognize her, math team leader, Mr. Chuck Britton, language arts team leader, also here with us this evening. Good evening. Mrs. Lindsay DeCastello, the science team leader, who is here this evening, Mr. David Kiefer, social studies team leader, and Mrs. Cindy Porball, a parent and community member representative for this team. We had an opportunity- Stand and be recognized, please. Thank you for all your work. We had quite a bit of a number of team meetings together this year, and we got to know each other quite well. And we've all, we've really worked with each other over the years in various capacities. We conducted a number of team meetings, formally, informally, at the Roots level, at the official level, spent many hours in conference rooms, really mulling over, and sometimes having difficult conversations, and sometimes positive conversations, but it was really an honest dialogue about things. We reviewed our 1112 AYP data, and then we conducted systems analysis, 14 guiding questions, and deceiving the number 14, because there's subcategories, I think, and ended up being close to 100 guiding questions. And we went over each one. We put a lot of heart and effort into going over. Really, what are we doing that we need to make improvement, and how are we gonna tackle that? From that, we developed systematic challenge priorities. They resulted in the formulation of four primary goals, and we ended up actually having a number of goals, but you even, it's interesting through this computer program, and also helps you sort of whittle down to these primary goals that you need to have. I wanted to not go over each and every detail of every goal provided in the plan, but I wanted to talk to you about what the, present the four goals, and maybe look at one specifically, so you have an idea through that process. First goal was, "We need to establish a system within the school that fully ensures consistent implementation of standards-aligned curricula across all classrooms for all students," and tying into our mission of high-quality learning for all. Secondly, "To establish a system within the school that fully ensures consistent implementation of effective instructional practices across all curriculum, all classrooms, pardon me." Thirdly, "To establish a system within the school that fully ensures school staff members use standards-aligned assessments to monitor student achievement and adjust instructional practices." And the fourth primary goal, "To establish a system within the school that fully ensures students who are academically at risk are identified early, and are supported by a process that provides interventions based upon student needs and include procedures for monitoring effectiveness." Those were the four primary goals through this process that the team, as well as working with teachers at the Roots level, developed through this process. So, an example of a specific plan, I picked the fourth one, because we really felt that was a highly, highly important, as they all are, but this is a good example. On page 22 of your plan, you could specifically look at it, and what are the things that we have to do in putting this in place? Establish a system within the school that fully ensures students who are academically at risk are identified early, supported by a process, provides interventions based upon student needs, and include procedures for monitoring effectiveness. So, looking at that goal, how do we indicate, or how do we know we're being effective of that? We use a variety of formative, or sort of, I like to call them along-the-road assessments, to help improve or to make changes to what we need to do. Data source, for example, development or use of individual student learning plans. Plans for individual students, at-risk students. Early on, how can we target what it is that they need to learn, how are we providing them a viable curriculum, and what are the strategies or interventions that we can do to make sure that they're reaching that target? And our specific targets, we want to see 100 percent proficiency on assessments of essential outcomes developed by the teachers in the collaborative process that we have used over time. We're gonna use our P-VOS data from 2013, Algebra I, Biology, and Literature assessments. Those are our summative, those are the measures that the high schools are measured by now, the Keystone exams. 90 percent of our students overall, 90 percent of students in each subgroup, will show at least one year of predicted growth in math, science, and reading. We'd like to see growth in those major areas according to P-VOS data. We'd like to use our CDT, or our classroom diagnostic tools, that we use for Algebra I, and as you can see down below, as well in Biology. As well as on page 23, Literature. So, by looking at that data, we were able to really measure to whether or not how effective we're being in those programs and those large areas. And from there, as you can see, we have to develop strategies. We decided, and we understood, that one of our strategies has to be looking at data analysis procedure, really using data-informed instruction, data teams, and data warehousing. Really, a data-driven system to determine if students are or not, they are or not learning. We have to provide an early identification system. We have to, a system developed to implement that identifies at-risk students. We look to things like, what do we need to know about the kids? Habitual truancy, IEP status, proficiency on reading math, science, writing standardized assessments, classroom grades, socioeconomic status, disciplinary history. We'd like to warehouse this data so that we have a complete and the most accurate picture of our students early on. And we're able to access this information so that we're really able to identify what needs to be done for these students. Providing interventions, key, a very, very, very important piece. Using our database and developing individual student learning plans, what are the appropriate interventions that we have to provide for our students? What strategies? And working through the collaborative process, the teachers will be able to really pinpoint what it is that they need to do to help those students. So, putting that into action, as the step provides for you, the next page is development of the database itself. We will develop it, and this is a more specific sort of the nuts and bolts, the action plan itself, as you can see, puts together. Implementation of a tiered intervention system for intentional non-learners, which we have in place currently in our school. The implementation of tiered intervention system for struggling learners. What are the different services? A period provide, we provide time assignment lists to know who those students are, and how we can accurately track and monitor those students. And lastly, the development of another specific strategy, as I mentioned earlier, the development of individual student learning plans in analyzing that. What is it that each specific student needs? What are the ways or strategies that we can look to develop that? So, through that comprehensive process, these are, here's one specific example of a goal, of strategies, and of action steps that we can put into place for Southmoreland High School. The final piece of the plan itself was to set achievement and performance targets. We're looking, and we set a target, overall, students last year at 61 percent in math. We're looking for a performance target. This year, an achievement target of 80 percent. Students overall, in reading, last year, we were at 70 percent performance target. We set the performance target at 80 percent. Test participation target for AYP measurement- Test participation target for AYP measurement, also required by the plan, 95%, as well as the graduation target of 85%, which is the federal and state guidelines for those targets. So, an executive summary of the school improvement plan for you. And at this particular moment, Dr. Scott or any of my other colleagues, any members of the team, any additional comments or any further questions for me? More than happy to entertain those at this time. Yes? Yeah, members of the teams, the core teams that we put together, in one of their meetings, they work collaboratively, analyze data. There are a variety and, you know, it's really an inception. It's a form, we use it at every level at this, at this point. One, one idea that we developed at the beginning of this year. So, they put those together in the teams and it specifies what are some of the areas that need to be addressed? What are the strategies that they're going to use? How are we going to know or how are we going to measure whether or not the student has met that particular target and sort of exit them out of the, that particular strategy that would be needed? Yes? No, but the team works to sort of build the strategies. Yes? Mm-hmm. Yes. It generally, and there's different formulations of it, you know, I think one, as we spoke earlier this year, through the new formulation of the graduation rate has changed. Yeah, it has been between 85 and 90% historically. This year, we were targeted as a, as a school because of the particular subgroup economically disadvantaged was at 75%, which therefore did not reach the 85% threshold of the rate. Overall, yes, but in that subcategory, we did not. We just finished the first Algebra I and Biology before the, the break. You know, anticipated the first data return, I'm projecting probably February because the second round will begin and I'm hoping February, but no specific plan from the state at this point. Absolutely, yeah, also. Does the parent get involved in this? Like, do you want the parents that the child's having, were struggling and work with this plan to help them do? Continual communication with parents, you know, that's key, whether it be through phone conversations, conferences, email. We conduct those dialogue daily, yeah. So, if they're in eighth grade and they're doing, they did really good in math, and others are in ninth grade and they're really struggling, you see that difference too? Like, they won't fall through that cracks of the eighth grade coming into the ninth grade. We, we, over the last several years, and I know when I took over as principal, was one of my key areas is really paying attention to that eighth, ninth grade transition and being assured that they're assigned in the appropriate levels of math and really I believe that is a very key area. Yes. Any other questions, ladies and gentlemen? Thank you for your time and thanks to the team and everybody.
item on the agenda, you know, it's kind of small and short. Before you, before you leave, you're the ones who are carrying on this for us, this project, all of these teams. Board is behind you for the charity work because we have high expectations of our school and you give the body to continue. Really, really.
Thank you. I'd like to give a little introduction to the Common Core. And I don't think Mr. Clara or I are going to advocate for it. I think we're going to try to be neutral about it. And as I was thinking about it, the best I could come up with was, was this. Years ago, for you sports fans, in the National Football League, when, when an offensive receiver went out for a pass, he could be harassed, pushed, shoved, grabbed, even held all over the field, all over the football field. And then the owners wanted to make the game more exciting. They wanted to open thing, they wanted more scoring, more excitement. So, the owners passed a rule that from now on, and the rule is in practice today, once a receiver goes beyond five yards past the line of scrimmage, he can't be touched anymore. And when the owners put that, that rule into effect many years ago, they didn't go to any of those defensive players and say, hey, what do you think? Is that, you know, you're going to be able to adjust to that rule? Is that a good rule? Do you like it? Don't like it? They felt it would be good for the game and that's what they did. I kind of feel like one of those defensive players. I really don't know if the Common Core is a good thing. Matter of fact, I don't know that I'm even that well-positioned to know. I think a teacher is much better positioned than I to know. But here we are, we're being given a different set of rules to play by and I do feel good about a couple of things. I feel very good that, that this change is happening, that happens in this district. We already have through our collaborative team system, we have a natural fluid system that allows teachers to get together and make adjustments to curriculum. It's not going to be as big of a challenge for us as it may be in other districts where there's no process for teachers to work together. If you're coming through with an entire, entirely new set of standards to be implemented in the classroom and if you have 10 4th grade teachers that have never worked together before, how in the world are you going to expect that they're going to be able to agree on these new things that kids are going to be expected to be able to know and do? That's going to be tough. But just to do a brief introduction on the Common Core, very simply, the Common Core State Standards Initiative is a state-led effort to establish a shared set of clear educational standards right now for English Language Arts and Mathematics that the states can voluntarily, I don't know if there's arm twisting or anyone's being strong-armed, but it's supposed to be a volunteer. The last I saw, 46 states have currently signed up voluntarily to be part of this national Common Core. The purpose of the Common Core State Standards Initiative is to make sure that every child across the country is given the tools they need to succeed. High standards that are consistent across states provide teachers, parents, and students with a set of clear expectations that everyone can work toward together. This will ensure that we maintain America's competitive edge so that all of our students are well-prepared with the skills and knowledge necessary to compete with not only their peers here at home, but with students from around the world. I hope all of that is true. Probably the only value judgment I'm going to make about the Common Core is what I will say right now. I think there are some states in this great union that need all the help they can get and ought to feel very lucky to have a set of standards to implement. There are some states across the country that are looking at clear standards for the first time. Before, it's just been up to individual schools and individual districts and, and everything is not coordinated. We're kind of lucky in Pennsylvania. You know, through the first decade of this century, Pennsylvania, on their own initiative, P D E, they revised all the standards. And I think they did a pretty good job of it. And we were, as those standards were being revised and, and published and put into effect, our teachers had to go through and make curriculum adjustments to reflect the changes in the standards. Well, guess what? We have to do that again. So, Pennsylvania, in my opinion, has, you know, it's, it's a pretty good state as far as having comprehensive standards. Whether you agree with the standards or you don't agree, we do have something that provides us as educators guides that says, hey, in, in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, in 8th grade, this is what we say a student should be able to know and perform in mathematics for this school year. And that's been a big help. If you know what those things are, we can work towards writing a curriculum that addresses that. It's being changed on us and we'd like to briefly talk about what those changes are going to entail. We have a two-minute and 50-second video that's going to talk about those.
For decades, we've been debating how to improve schools in the United States. This has been born from a realization that in an ever-changing world, our students need better knowledge and tools to prepare them to compete in the global economy. In math, science, and reading, our students haven't... Just have to place the microphones right in the neighborhood. Okay. Thank you, Chris. Can I go full screen on that? Haven't been keeping pace with their most advanced. For decades, we've been debating how to improve schools in the United States. This has been born from a realization that in an ever-changing world, our students need better knowledge and tools to prepare them to compete in the global economy. In math, science, and reading, our students haven't been keeping pace with their most advanced international peers. Persistent and dramatic achievement gaps still exist in our country. College remediation rates are abysmal and employers say students are unprepared to perform and thrive in the workforce. The need to audaciously confront these issues resulted in a remarkable collaborative effort, the promise of consistent, shared, and rigorous education standards for all students that align with college and work expectations. A new set of ambitious academic standards to set the foundation for even greater student growth and success. These standards, now being implemented by more than 44 states across the nation, were built upon strengths and lessons learned in states. They were informed by other top-performing countries and grounded in research and evidence. And practitioners, content experts, teachers, researchers, and leaders in higher education and business all came together to make it happen. These standards were developed by states and for states. They are the clearest statements yet about the knowledge and skills that students need to master in order to be prepared for college and the workforce. The standards were designed with great care to ensure that they were clear, consistent, rigorous, and relevant. All are undeniably important when it comes to preparing students to successfully meet the demands of college and the workplace. Thanks to the unprecedented collaboration among states, young people, regardless of their background or where they live, will be taught to standards that, once mastered, will have prepared them for college and career success. The vignettes that follow explain the standards in far greater depth. Standards writers walk us through how the standards came to be, who was involved, and the aspirations the standards set for all students. Take a glimpse into the promise of these standards as states do the hard work of implementing them with fidelity and care. Use what you hear to start engaging conversations, stimulate creativity in the classroom, help align expectations, and get communities involved. Find out why state standards are far from common.
So, as you can see, we're, we're being given new educational standards. And I think, as, as I've thought and tried to plan some of this, the artful part for us as educators and our teaching staff is the transition, going from what we currently have to what we're going to have to do. Taking the standards that we have and the curriculum based on those standards to the new standards and the new curriculum. Because if you do it too early, our kids are still being assessed on the Pennsylvania standards and we're, we're held accountable. If, if we don't do well this year, then we'll have schools in warning and school improvement and all that kind of stuff. So, we have to transition, we have to transition successfully, but we have to take great care into how the transition goes, to the best of our, and sometimes you're not really given all the, the best information, which is a frustration when you can't get maybe some of the information that you really seek. But as far as we know now, in, in 2014, our 3rd through 8th grade P S S A will be based on the Common Core for the first time and no longer on the Pennsylvania standards. The assessment will be written on the, the Common Core. And then the following year in 15, grades 6 to 8 will have their assessment written off of the Common Core. So, that gives you a little bit of an idea about how we have to prepare for that transition. Pennsylvania, again, P D E does a pretty nice job of giving support. They call it crosswalks. They show you what the current standard is and, and the Common Core standard and the Pennsylvania Common Core. Pennsylvania wants to take it a little, little, they don't want to just blanketly adopt the Common Core, they want to be able to adjust and tweak it a little bit to the Pennsylvania Common Core. They offer something called crosswalks to show you what the changes and the differences are. And we want to just give you one example of a crosswalk in a standard. And I'm picking on a former high school English teacher to talk about, didn't we pick an 11th grade? Would you just show that, Mr. Clara, please? And this is called a crosswalk. How do you go from what was to what will be?
Dr. Scott mentioned rule changes. My first year as a rugby player, they failed to tell me for three or four practices that when you're tackled, you are expected to put the ball on the ground. They were good information for about three or four practices, I got beat up irregularly. Finally, though, the rule made some sense to me and said, oh, that's what I'm supposed to do. So, again, to echo Dr. Scott's sentiments, I'm not going to make a value judgment on whether or not this is a great idea. What I'm going to say is, these are the rules and we will play them to the best of our ability. What we're looking at is what they call crosswalk, the Pennsylvania Department of Education provides us with this. And so, on the left-hand side, this is the Common Core standard. And what we learned in our study of crosswalks is that there are fewer of the standards, but they are more explicit in what they expect you to make sure the kids know. The P A academic standards that we have had for many years, there were many of them and they were a little bit more general. There are fewer of these and they are much more explicit. And what you see in the middle is what the Common Core standard is. Pennsylvania interpreted that and created their own base upon what they... certainly read an article, or will read an essay, will read a poem, but then when you say, okay, what does this mean? That's a difficult jump to make. It's sometimes based upon your own experiences, or it's based upon something else that you've read. And so, kids are looking for ways to be able to explain how this piece connects to them. And the state expects us to do a good job of that. This is how they expect us to do it. In the past, there were several of those standards that we might look at in order to accomplish this goal. They're trying to have fewer of those now in the Common Core and be very explicit in those things. So that's what it looks like. And again, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to present it to you. We'll see how we are able to interpret this and grow with it, but I assure you, we'll have our best effort when we do it.
A gentleman named Bob Marzano, who's one of the leading researchers in curriculum and curriculum design in the world, he says if you teach every single Common Core standard, it will take twice the amount of days as what you currently have. So there is an understanding that with standards, you probably can't teach every single standard. So again, the art of teaching comes into play again, where teachers really have to... The term they use in education curriculum speak is unpack. You have to be able to take a standard apart and all the standards, you have to unpack them and figure out what are the big ideas. And again, why I'm so confident about our arrangement is, we have at least, you know, three meetings a week where teachers are together, and they can get together and say, hey, look at this standard. What is that? What's the big idea coming? What's the theme that runs through that standard? That's a lot different than the ten second-grade teachers that never meet together, being given the new Common Core standards, and then having to figure out for themselves what the big ideas are. And very likely, they might have a whole bunch of big ideas that don't match up. And then you have a whole bunch of students that aren't being given a guaranteed curriculum. So we're well-structured to take on this project in a fluid way. And again, it'll just be up to our abilities and talents and the strength of our leadership to see how successful we are in making this transition. Well, and again, it's... I mean, it could happen tomorrow, but we want to make sure that those PSSAs that we have coming up in March that are still based on the old, the Pennsylvania academic standards, we're trying to make sure our kids are successful on that. And then we also have to know then when the switch is occurring. And obviously, PDE field tests stuff where, you know, they come to us and they give it to our seventh graders, and they see how we do. And then they adjust things and get it ready to be operational the following year. But again, our best information is 2014, not this school year, but the next school year, our third-through-eighth graders will be assessed based on the Pennsylvania Common Core. The following year, that'll go to our sixth-through-eighth graders.
Do they vary by states? For example, Pennsylvania, Florida, Alaska, Hawaii. Is that a common core in all of those, or does each state do a variation of that?
I think Pennsylvania's one of the few states that has actually decided to adopt a similar variation. A lot of the states are just adopting the Common Core. Pennsylvania is saying that by... Yes. Pennsylvania is saying by adopting the Pennsylvania Common Core, they're taking the Common Core and even enriching it more, is the claim.
I got a question. I noticed the word irrelevance. Who decides what's relevant? And what I mean by that is, and I'm just throwing out these for instances, if you're in Pennsylvania, in an ever-increasing, I think, liberal world or country, you know, the Constitution, if the Common Core says, you know, teach one day or one hour about the Constitution, is that it? I mean, who decides what's relevant and what's important in today's world? I mean, do Pennsylvanians get to learn about the Quakers and the Mormons about the Mormons? Or does somebody in Texas decide that the Mormons and the Quakers don't matter?
And there is the interesting piece that goes to local control. I mean, obviously, one of the states that has not adopted is Texas. And you can probably understand issues that Texas thinks they have with a national curriculum. So the people, you know, if you trace this back to the genesis, the two groups that supported the formation was the National Governors Council and the National Council of Chief School Executives, Secretaries of Education. Those two groups said, hey, this would be a great idea. And then they started enlisting educators from around the country to work together to develop the Common Core. But that's, you know, that goes at your local control, you know? Obviously, in our curriculum, in the elementary-level Pennsylvania history, in local history, local Pennsylvania history is a pretty big part of the curriculum. And how will that now come into, if it will, come into conflict with the Common Core? We're going to have to wait and see. But for someone, your point, Mr. Alt, is very good about someone that might like to say, I have a reservation. Because maybe, not to say we don't respect something else, but hey, we are Pennsylvanians. We live here in Pennsylvania, and maybe we don't want as much part of the curriculum devoted to something else that may be more important based on geography or more relevant. Let's just use that word, relevant, which you started off with.
I have one other question. Of the thirteen countries that are ahead of us, do they use a method like this? Or does anybody even know? What makes them more successful than us?
Good question. I think other countries certainly are much more nationalized and standardized than we are. If you look back to the genesis of this country, we were formed by a lot of people that were trying to get away from that kind of thought, that kind of feared and distrusted a central power making all your decisions for you. And that's kind of really what has made us individual and pretty special throughout our two-hundred-and-some years.
But we really don't know what they use to get ahead. What method they use?
Well, yeah, no, Mr. Alt. The only other thing I would say about that is, when you look at the international scores, we probably are one of the very few countries on those international reports where we report out all of our kids. In those other countries, there is an expectation that all kids are being educated and all kids are being tested. So sometimes, it's really hard to compare when you know, in our country, all of our kids, poor kids, minority kids, they're all being tested, the scores are being reported. Other countries, it's only the kids that are fortunate enough to go to school. And those kids, because they're the elite, they tend to do pretty well. So sometimes, it's a difficult comparison to track.
This is very helpful. Does anyone else have... Dr. Feike, you have a few comments here on you looking at it. Go ahead if you want to.
I have questions. Okay, that's fine. Go ahead. More questions?
Any other questions from anyone? Please contact us, email, telephone, if anything comes up, and we'll try to find the answers. This is new for us also. Thank you.
Well, it's true, it's in many...
One shoe doesn't fit every foot.
I have a question on the school improvement plan. I would ask that here before we check...
That's what we're...
No, we're on the Common Core.
Go ahead. Mr. Benz has an initial question. Go ahead here.
It's back to the school improvement plan. That's why I wanted to jump in before we kept this. At Hershey, I heard at one of my sessions of the fact of having it where all schools did a school improvement plan, even if they didn't need to, required by the state. Is that something that would be an ideal to do for all our buildings to help move things along and set our targets?
Thank you, Mr. Benz. Excellent question. And the process of going through this plan, we felt was so beneficial to help us learn about the issues, the accomplishments, the challenges, the goals, the action plan, that we kind of made a decision going through this process that we wanted to engage all of our schools in this process. And we feel it's so important that we're really going to try with due diligence to do that. Interesting thing is, and I think it was a good process, I'm glad we did it. We did it back in 2008 with SES, and now they're being nominated for a national blue ribbon. It's some... It can be a little painful to say, hey, we haven't done what we've needed to do. It's a lot of work. And the interesting thing is, you know, recently, there was this article in the paper about a study on teacher absences. So the only thing I want to mention is, this plan required all of our team leaders, our guidance counselor, to be out of their classrooms. And I think we probably spent about five entire days out. So if there's five people times, that's twenty-five absences right there. So you're bringing subs in, you're taking teachers out of the classroom. We're trying to balance all of that. It took many, many, many hours to put this together. So even saying that, we're looking at ways that we might be able to get the leadership teams from the other schools involved in writing, going through this process. And actually, PDE through the IU is recommending the same thing, that you really might, you really may want to consider having all of your schools, because it really sets the groundwork for the work that you're going to be doing together for the next two school years. And we like it. So yeah, thanks for bringing that up.
Is that software available, or whatever it is? Is it available if your school doesn't need improvement?
Yes.
Can you still access that?
Yes, it is.
Okay, that's good.
It's part of the formerly the Strategic Planning Tool. It's now called the Comprehensive Plan, and it's part of that website.
Thank you very much.
So even though SES is being nominated for a national blue ribbon, we still think that they could really benefit from going through this process of school improvement is really goal-setting for your school and mapping out your path to success.
Thank you.
Very, very good. Dr. Feike, I think you had a few comments.
First of all, Tim, I want to say that my heart stopped when I heard you actually say something that I agree with, that we agree on.
Tell me what it was. I want to write it down.
You'll see it. And it's, you know, and I really appreciate the fact that you have, you have obviously taken the time to look at both sides of this issue, or the many sides of this issue. When this first came up, and that's why I asked three months ago to talk about it, I was, I've been very concerned and been studying very hard on this topic because I felt that we needed to be informed as a school board when we make our decisions. The first paper that you're getting, just simply, the first one is just a letter that appeared in the Tribune. He's a fellow education policy from the Heartland Institute. And he basically says, "The federal government's use of money and muscle to pressure states into a unitary Common Core mold violates federal law prohibiting federal dictation of curriculum." And we'll talk more about that. But I read that little book we get from PSBA from cover to cover. If you look down there, it says, the state, this is a very recent issue last week, and it was, "The state will be applying for a waiver from the United States Department of Education from the requirements of No Child Left Behind Act." That, of course, will bring changes in requirements affecting schools. So you say, well, why? What's that got to do with anything? And you'll see in the next handout, in the last column, it says, "The Obama administration made adopting the Common Core a requirement for No Child Left Behind waivers, which exempt states from 100% proficiency by next year." I'm old enough that I've seen so many of these things come and go, but I remember with the Clinton thing, and then the Bush thing, and now the Obama thing. Every kid, 100% of all kids were going to do this. Everybody who has two working brain cells knows that this can't happen. So every time the heat is turned up, they run for the hills and they change everything. But one of the things that he talked about was the fact that this plan was developed by a Governors Association and a group of school administrators. And down at the bottom, it talks about the fact that, it says here, "The National Governors Association Center and the Council of Chief State School Officers led this effort." Well, not everybody's willing to do it. And this has been a real hot issue, and, you know, I'm currently working with some people on this. One reason for pushback is that only a few state legislatures even voted on the standards. Typically, it has been state education boards in collaboration with governors that have approved the standards. They did not, as Dr. Scott said, they did not ask the football player what he thought of the rules. They did it, and they're handing it to you, and you're going to take it the way it is. But I got a copy of a white paper that is called Controlling Education from the Top: Why the Common Core is Bad for America. Well, what I did is, I went to page thirty-four. The Common Core standards, ladies and gentlemen, come with a disclaimer. They come with a disclaimer. They make no representations or warranties of any kind, including accuracy, the presence or absence of errors, whether or not discoverable. They are not responsible for any action arising in any way out of the use of the Common Core state standards, even if advised, of the possibility of such risk and potential damage. Now, this fabulous document, these things that they have, they're going to make us do, comes with a disclaimer. And this is shocking. The next article I'm going to give you comes from another magazine that you all get called the American School Board Journal of January, and it is an article called Change by Decree. And this particular contributor, who's written many, many books, says the top-down school reform won't work. If you want lasting change, you create policies with a collaborative and respectful process. And many people do not believe that this was collaborative, nor did they think it was respectful. The next one is a product of an organization, a Commonwealth Education organization, which is kind of a watchdog organization. And you'll see at the top, they list groups that are opposed to the Common Core standards, and it's a pretty hefty group. There are several states that have refused to implement them, and as a result, they're going to lose federal money. Well, a friend of mine went to Harrisburg and had an hour-long meeting with Ron Tamala. And she said to him, look, she said, don't you care about local control? And Ron Tamala said, I will always go for the federal money. Will always go for the federal money. Then we learned, just, I just learned, I think, today, today or yesterday, that when the states... You are getting federal money. And right now, you have, and Jack Moore, you read them to me, a long list of ways that you can use federal money. Well, get ready, that's all going to change. The districts don't know this yet, but the federal government says, who pays the piper calls the tune. We're giving you the money. We're going to tell you down to the nickel what you're allowed to do with it. This is, in fact, a dictatorial system implemented by this government who says, we will tell you what your children will learn. And I know, Jack... said, "I will always go for the federal money. I will always go for the federal money." Then we learned, just, I just learned, I think today, today or yesterday, that when the states, you are getting federal money. And right now, you have, and Jack Moore, you read them to me, a long list of ways that you can use federal money. Well, get ready, that's all going to change. The districts don't know this yet, but the federal government says, "Who pays the piper calls the tune. We're giving you the money. We're going to tell you down to the nickel what you're allowed to do with it." This is, in fact, a dictatorial system implemented by this government who says, "We will tell you what your children will learn." And I know, Jack said, you made the statement, "Well, we can always go higher than the, than the Common Core standards." And I'll get into that.
Dr. Feig, do summarize here where you're...
No, I'm not going to summarize. This is way too important. This is our students, Levi.
Right. So please, within the next five minutes...
No, no, I'm going to speak. I'm going to speak.
Give us your, we, I think we understand where you're going here.
No, I know you don't understand.
Okay.
Now, this is just one article here that tells you that they're going to eliminate, there's a lot of pressure now to eliminate teaching children cursive writing. They feel that because kids text and type and all that, they don't, they don't need cursive writing. The critics of that say that that is a reflection of your personality. It is wrong to do that. But there's another group here, who, the Pioneer Institute, who believes that these, these norms, these Common Core standards are a violation of federal law. And they believe that despite three federal laws that prohibit federal departments or agency from directing, supervising, or controlling elementary and secondary school curriculum, program of instructions and materials, the United States Department of Education has placed the nation on the road to a national curriculum. And there is, there's a lot of feeling here that that is not something that is going to go unnoticed. But the next one, I think you'll find very interesting. I think all of you understand that any time you try to make some changes or do something, it's going to cost. This article is called Common Core Standards Aren't Cheap. And it talks about what's going, what it's going to cost. And they're, they're saying that the local school districts will pay $165.5 million of new spending, including new textbooks, substitute teachers, our teachers have to be retrained with this, the cost of time to each of the teachers, training them, that it's not going to be as simple as you think. But anyhow, these people who developed the Common Core, Common Core standards worked as a team. And there were two members of that team, Dr. Werman and Dr. Stotsky, and both of them refused to sign off on them. It's my understanding, they refused to sign off on them. The first one you're getting is a, is a statement by Dr. Stotsky about the Common Core standards. And this is critical, if you look at that first, first, at the bottom of the first column. What they are calling college readiness standards are empty skill sets. They do not point to readiness for a high school diploma. They do not know the reading level of the passages to be used, or any, what tests are going to be based on these standards. But what's horrible is up there where the stars are, it says, "The average reading level on the passages of the common tests now being developed to determine college readiness is at about the seventh grade level." Another thing they're going to do is teachers are going to spend 50% of their reading instructional time on nonfiction and informational text, for example, how to read a manual. And somewhere in here, it says, "They will no longer be teaching many of the great classics of all time, but rather something like Letters from the Birmingham Jail," something like that. But the other thing on the second page, it says that the Common Core standards conclude that they do not provide sufficient clarity and detail to guide teachers in curriculum and assessment developers effectively. The reading standards for both literature and informational tests fail to address all of these things down below, and that the standards adequately fail to, they fail to adequately scaffold the skills from grade to grade, or delineate what students should be able to do without guidance or support from adults. Dr. Werman is, is an ultimate authority on mathematics. And you can read his bio, all of his credentials here, and he said, "He has thoroughly reviewed the Common Core standards and found that they failed to achieve their stated goal of improving K-12 mathematic achievement. It abandons the expectation for all students to take algebra in grade eight. And as a result, as a practical matter, the great majority of American students will not be able to reach calculus in high school." It talks, it says that the course of study aligned with the Common Core provides students with poor preparation for taking algebra in grade eight. It replaces the traditional foundations of Euclidean geometry with an experimental approach. This approach has never been successfully used in any sizable system. It even failed in the school for gifted and talented students in Moscow, where it was invented. And it goes on to tell you that Common Core fails to teach prime factorization, does not include teaching about least common denominators, greatest common factors, fails to include conversions among fractions, decimals, and percents, de-emphasizes algebraic manipulation, does not require proficiency with addition and subtraction until grade four, which is a grade behind the expectation of high-performing states. Common Core does not require proficiency with multiplication using a standard algorithm. It does not require competency with division, and so forth and so on. When you get to the very end, it says here, "In terms of college readiness, its content is far below what is presently expected for college eligibility, which will create unreasonable expectations by parents and pressure on state universities to admit under-prepared students with concomitant growth in remedial enrollment in college." And down at the, at the bottom of, I won't, I won't go over there. But what, if you read this in more detail, you'll see that it says...
Very good, Dr. Feig. We can read this. Go ahead.
She only has two more handouts, Levi. I'd like to hear this.
Thank you.
I think it's very important.
It says that when they use...
Yeah, I mean, I think, but I do think it's important.
It says, "College education, college preparation, college readiness means for a non-selective community college." And they talk about college readiness, that's defined as a non-selective community college, uh, community college. The other one I thought would be interesting, of interest to the board, since I'm on technology. They talked about what happens to kids who are constantly using digital technology. And down at the bottom, they, they got this information from teachers. Teachers see the impact of entertainment media. 71% said they thought technology was hurting attention span. 60% said it hindered students' ability to write and communicate face-to-face, and half said it hurt critical thinking and their ability to do homework. And the last one you got before continues to be my main concern. I continue to be very concerned about this. And Tim, I know you are too, and I know you want to work to, to make this better. But these are, this is a serious concern. Right now, in Southmoreland, we give no nationally standardized tests at all. All we give is that thing called a PSSA, and we give no national test. We have no idea where our kids stand. The only national test that is taken is on a voluntary, paid, paid-to-play basis by kids who choose to take the SAT. And this is what we're showing. And again, I mentioned it before, I still think Southmoreland should give a nationally normed test so that we know where our kids stand in relation to the, the rest of the kids in our nation, because I believe we have to be, at least, at minimally nationally competitive for our students to go out and succeed in the world.
What's the test the kids take, the four, four sites? Is that something that...
It's a diagnostic.
Well, is that not something that you're saying? Kind of get an idea where they're at?
It's diagnostic, Jesse. The teachers use it to see where the child needs help. Am I right, Tim?
Yes.
If I might just say something, not to go on. I didn't know a whole lot about this. In fact, I was asking Dr. Feig before the meeting about Common Core. But now that I see this stuff, and I've seen the slide presentation, I actually do know more than I thought I did. Over the years, and I mentioned Texas, you know, we need to be careful of what we, you know, say defer to the experts and let them decide. Because when they decide, it's not going to be something you may like. I mentioned a couple of things, like the Quakers and the Mormons. But Texas refuses to do this. And one of the things I remember is, they went and they spent all this money to get so-called experts to write your textbooks, and it took a lot of things out. Because the people that sat on that committee said, oh, the Alamo wasn't important, and this wasn't important, and this wasn't important. And people in Texas said, "What do you mean? It's not important." That's Texas. So be careful where you go. I mean, we talk about money and money being important. This is even more important than money, what we're going to teach our kids. And, and not one shoe, like I said, not, one shoe fits all the kids. They need to go their own levels.
Tim, you have here on this school improvement plan, that we're going to establish a system that fully ensures school staff members use standard-aligned assessments to monitor student achievement. So here again, we're not only going to get the curriculum, they're going to give you the test and tell you how to measure it. And Jack, you did say that we could go above and beyond that. But, you know, this, this thought came to my mind. There's a new teacher evaluation system going into place. It's my understanding that 50% of the evaluation is going to be based on student achievement, okay? So you hand me the Common Core standards, and I have the assessment, and you say, "Well, teach above it." Are you kidding me? I'm going to teach exactly to that standard, because I want those test scores to show that I'm a good teacher, I'm getting my 50%. And I'm not putting teachers down. I would do that. Anybody in their right mind would do that. I think it's, it's very altruistic to think it will rise above all that. And, and, you know, I hope we do. But in the end, it says right here, we're going to have to use the assessment that goes with the standards, and that's how they're going to be measured. And that's, that's coming, right, Jack?
A real quick analogy, and I probably shouldn't say this, because my tax customers might be out there.
Go ahead, go ahead.
And I'll end this. But an example is, the IRS wants to govern tax preparers, of which I am one. And so they said, "We're going to standardize the test and give it to all the preparers." Well, I went and took it. I was one of the first ones that took it. I didn't do very well on the test. Today, I read that very few people actually passed this test. And what I'm saying is, the people that wrote this test, and wrote this curriculum that I studied, were asking things that I won't cross that bridge, maybe one in 1,000 tax returns. None of the questions on there had anything to do with relevant information. What I'm saying is, be careful who you let dictate to you what you're going to learn and what you're going to teach.
Well, do we have a choice?
Sure do.
Yes.
We're going to vote on, like, the school district votes.
You want to make a statement on that?
Well, I don't know. Is this something that's going to come up in the future, saying, "Do you want us to vote on this?" Or is this just something that Pennsylvania mandates us, "You do"?
Yes.
So we really don't have a voice?
Probably not.
I pretty appreciate Dr. Scott, and your staff, the report and everything. And I, I don't know whether disappointing to you or affirming, but probably quite a few of us around the table agree philosophically with what you've presented, you've made here, in the critique of a national curriculum, the movement toward that. And probably, if you check the staff, you'd find a lot of agreement on that. And I suppose we're all trying to work out that paradox or that dynamic, same as you do when you do the income tax and...
It'll get shoved down our throats.
Right. So thanks for the good discussion on it. Really, really appreciate it. And I suppose we're, we're kind of like my dogs when they're thrown in the water, we just keep paddling as fast as we can.
Well, with all the PLC that you do once a week, you should be able to identify and blow these Common Cores out of the water with all your PLC that you do all the time.
I think we are well-positioned to be able to deal with this new mandate.
And go over and above.
Good. Let's move to the next topic.
The next item is just a reminder, on January 25th is the County Business Education Prayer Breakfast. If you are interested in attending, please let Mrs. Tarsen know.
New business? Or, I'm sorry, are we old business who moved to new business? Is that what you were...
Yeah, I had nothing on the agenda, old business. New business, again, we'll be asking you to vote to approve the plan that Mr. Krawcheck and Dr. Scott discussed with you. The next item, we'll be asking you to vote on a resolution to approve the Guaranteed Energy Savings Act renovation project for Central Westmoreland Career and Technology Center. I believe there was someone here a few months ago that discussed that at great length with you. In terms of cost, to our district, it would be approximately $52,957 a year if the Frazier School District participates. If they do not participate, it would be $57,573.68 per year. And there's a resolution and...
Yeah, can you talk about that?
There's also a copy of the public notice that already went into the paper to indicate that we were going to vote on the project.
Fifteen years. And I think we should talk about it.
Let's do this. We've, we've given this quite a bit of discussion. We had representatives from them, from their, from the WIU, or what is it, the CWCTC Technical School. I would like to hear from Ms. Kaufman on whether, what she's recommending here, and then do raise any questions or discussions that you have.
What position?
Yes.
What was the, no, what's, no Frazier again? I didn't get that.
With or without?
Without Frazier.
57,573.
Thank you.
And 52.
And 52,9.
52,9. If Frazier includes himself in the project.
Go ahead, Ms. Kaufman. Do you have any comments here?
The hope of the joint council at, at the VOTEC is that all nine districts would, you know, recommend this. Again, if one district says no, then it's totally off the board. The, the pros of going with this is that the, hop me on here with the plant, what's the name of the company? Chevron.
Chevron.
Chevron will front the monies upfront, and this doesn't take effect until the 2014, like, the project will start now, and this doesn't take effect in our budget till 2014, 2015 school year. There are, again, because it's a Energy Savings Act, there are no change orders, whatever Chevron says the amount is, it will be. So if they run into something that they didn't foresee, whether it be all that asbestos or something like that, there's not going to be a change order take effect. Once they find out the energy savings will be reimbursement to the schools for that, as far as energy and the lighting and things, and again, it's not anything to make the building look pretty. It is absolutely necessary with the, the roof, the boilers are 37 years old, they can't get parts. Yeah, you could piece it out, like you said, if you just do this, but then it takes them, they can't get replacement parts. So chants, and chances are that the VOTEC would have to close down. They've discussed all this here. I'm just reminding you of some of the reasons to go. And it's the hope of the joint council that all the school districts do it.
Okay. Any other comments?
Are there alternatives?
How's that?
Are there alternatives? Can parents choose to send their kids to community college to learn new skills? Can we join another group?
We cannot, we cannot join another group.
Why? Why is that?
You're assigned to, to a vocational technical school. As Dr. Matt explained to me, you're assigned to a particular vocational technical school senior area. We also have a great deal of equity to have buildings. We helped build as well.
Or joint, or donors.
No.
And how did Frazier get out of it? They're not part of the nine.
They don't, they don't have a vocational, a regional vocational technical school in their area, my understanding.
Indian Town?
Pardon you? I don't know what's in Indian Town. I believe, I believe the history is that Frazier attended Connelsville's district-owned program for a while. Right. But those are not a consortium like ours is. They're owned by the district. And Frazier sent kids there, and then they began to send kids to our VOTEC on a...
So they were assigned, and I'm just saying, Frazier had to be assigned.
They were assigned. If there's a regional vocational technical school in your area, you're assigned to it. So in Westmoreland County, for example, the kids who go to Franklin Regional, go to Northern CWCTC, unless they want to take a shop that doesn't exist in Northern. For example, Autobody or Automechanics, one of the two, is offered at ours. Some Franklin Regional kids come to ours. For the most part, they're going there. That's an example. But you are assigned. One district was actually exploring the possibility of going to another CWCTC-type place in Allegheny County. And we're told, no, you can't do it. You're, you're assigned to your regional consortium. I don't know why. Can, can I explain to you?
Well, if one school, say it wasn't ours, if one school votes it down, then they basically go out of business. So that would not, that would not prevent us from seeking to go somewhere else. The government couldn't stop us from sending kids somewhere else.
If one school votes it down, they probably don't go out of business, but then they begin to do emergency and piecemeal repairs and offer less programs. So yeah, there is a possibility that we might be sending our kids to another... So yeah, there is a possibility that we might be sending our kids to another vocational technical school. Certainly wouldn't be as close. It would involve a lot more time on buses. You know, there are a lot of drawbacks there as well, but...
It just really bothers me that they've let, that management for all those years, and they say, "Oh, it was just poor management." It just really bothers me that now we have to step up to the plate. I really don't like that, and we don't have the money to do it.
Did any other schools vote for it yet, Jack?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Penn traffic?
I think it was the first to vote, and I believe they supported it.
They moved our meeting to the 30th of January to be further than everybody to see than...
Weren't we going to vote on this sooner?
Yeah, actually, they're asking everybody to vote in January. So here we are on January the 3rd, probably one of the first districts to be discussing, but I'm guessing within the next, you know, week to two weeks, we'll be hearing what boards are planning to do.
If it doesn't go...
Mr. Krawcheck, let us monitor it at least next Thursday and report on where the toll of the, where it is at this point.
Yeah, we can do that, sure.
My concern is that we look at what's happening in our nation, in our state, and again, in our school district. We have what's called legacy costs. These are decisions that are made by people who came before us. They spent the money, we pay the bills. We're passing this on to our grandchildren, their children. We're asking $863,595. That's what we're really asking. And we're telling the people for the years to come, "We're going to make this decision, and they're going to pay the bills." And this legacy thing is what gets people into trouble, and I, that's my only concern, Josie, is this school...
But this school, you have to remember, is for people that don't go to college, and the people that are, that we need at actual trades, for plumbers, electricians, auto mechanics that don't go, this school closes, they'll never have that opportunity.
We'll pay tuition to technicals.
Divide up $800,000 by 37 years and see what it would cost, what we should have been paying is just what we're paying now, that we're going to need to pay for the future, that we never did pay. You're saying, "Well, why? It was 37 years. That building's been up, and no money's ever been gone there for building repairs." So then you divide that 800-some thousand by your 37 years and...
Nothing has happened.
Huh?
But nothing has happened.
I know, but I'm saying, that money, that school deserves to be livable and healthy for our kids.
I don't disagree with you. We've put nothing into it, you're saying, for 37 years.
If we don't do it and the boiler breaks down, we're going to spend way more money going after all that stuff, and we're really going to be in a mess.
We're going to give, I bet we've heard the various, but we give you the last word here and...
That's fine. I mean, you heard everything I heard, so...
Very smooth. Let's move to the SSD participation.
Yes, we would need approval for the Southmoreland School District to participate in the joint purchasing consortium for fuel. And we'll take a real quick peek at that item here. We would also need to name an authorized representative to represent the Southmoreland School District in that consortium. That could either be myself, Dr. Scott, perhaps Mr. Swink as the Transportation Director. So we'll need to name our representatives as well.
Who suggests some?
Mr. Swink, would you like to represent us on the fuel consortium?
Yeah, that's fine.
Very well. Thank you.
Bring that. We have a few policy. These were suggestions which were made at the last meeting. Go ahead.
Now, policy 123.1, it was suggested that perhaps time could be better spent by having administration meet with coaches both for pre- and postseason conferences, and in the event that there are situations that occur where a change needs to be made, administration can then make that recommendation to the board. So the only changes that I made is I omitted the words Athletic Committee of the Board and substituted the word Administration there. By policy, we would absolutely be required to hold those meetings. They just wouldn't necessarily occur at board level at this point.
For policy 123.1, I would like to throw up the suggestion of also eliminating the fall sports, winter sports, and spring sports deadlines for a couple of different reasons. One, coaches can resign any time of the year, and I also know there's been times where we've run into constraints with different contracts being negotiated, or this happening or that happening, that we ran out of time to get that decision made by that certain date. So I'd just like to throw that out to the board to see if there's interest in those three lines there.
Comments on that suggestion there? In some ways, it would give the board the same playing field that a coach has at the present time in regards, especially if such, I understand why it came in, it came out. You don't want to misuse someone planning for the season. On the other hand, at least in my experience, I've agreed with Mr. Benz, it's really pushed, pushed things when it might be wiser to reflect on the season a few months. I see some nodding. Shall we test that next week and vote on it?
Yes.
Okay. Did you...
Dr. Scott is just whispering here, and it makes sense. In many districts, coaches have an opportunity to renew their contract on an annual basis at the end of the season. So that might be another way to look at things.
So if they don't come to us, then it's open?
Or if we choose to have them, you know, we can go to them as well.
You could set up a deadline. Say you coached a ball and walked the end of that season. If you didn't come and tell us you wanted it by a certain day, then it's open, right?
Well, could I ask a little input from Mr. Krawcheck, please, who has explained this to me in the past and has a pretty good working knowledge of WPIL? Can you come up, Dan, to the podium, please? And I guess my question was, Dan, based on something that we had discussed many times in the past, is that in many districts, it is kind of practiced that the board renews contracts on a year, on an annual basis. So there's no expectation when a season ends that a supplement is carried over. The board has to take that action. Can you tell me anything?
Well, again, I think that is a common practice across the region.
I don't know if you're on, Dan.
Yeah, that is a common practice across the region. I think if you look at some of our neighboring districts and sort of our gauge, our conferences, you know, practice that takes place.
I think what we have discussed in the past is an issue when a season ends and there's no discussion on the board side and no direction from the coaches' side, and months go by, and then before a season starts, we find out that a coach is resigning. And if there's, we have discussed administratively, if there's more initiative from the board's side, then you know that you've locked the person in. Yes, you had a, we agree, we like what you're doing with the program. We'd like you to continue. Or do you want to continue for the next year? And then we kind of felt that it would greatly reduce some of the situations we have been in recently where we're left reacting to things and looking for qualified people at the last minute.
Yeah, it gives us, I think it really gives a more proactive approach to not being left in that situation of having to, you know, have a couple of weeks before season to, you know, really secure. We're looking for the, you know, the most qualified candidates, and that process sometimes can be hampered by not, not having that in place.
But what you're suggesting would be simply a variation of this one, because this one in essence says, "You're in another year unless the board takes action otherwise."
Yeah.
You want us to leave it then, then it would be better to leave it out?
No. I, okay, let's, I like the fact that if you're doing well, it's hands-off. Keep going. And for 90% of our coaches, that's the case, and we don't, we don't evaluate the teachers yearly. You do that. We have an athletic director. We have you as a principal. I'm not interested in evaluating individual coaches each year. I think it's micromanaging. That's my opinion. And I think the other schools, I don't care if they do it, a lot of boards are tempted to micromanage, and I don't think it's our. Other, I also think it elevates sports to a level that it shouldn't be in our board time and district. If a coach is doing well, go to it. God bless you. Keep on going from year to year, as far as that concerned.
I...
You do the evaluation.
Yeah, I agree with you, Mr. Miller, and I think we're a little off on semantics here, because currently, I think the reality is, we have those exit meetings, but those exit meetings really don't get to the heart of whether someone is doing well or not. It's just kind of a meet and greet and...
That's why we want to take them out.
But, so if you go administratively, then a purpose of the meeting could be for the administration to recommend the renewal of that coaching contract, you know, based on the administrative criteria. I think right now, what kind of hampers us is, it's understood that the supplemental continues, but we really have no way of knowing administratively if the person really wants to continue that supplemental. And oftentimes, we find out too late that they do not. And I think in those administrative meetings, we'd have an opportunity to ask those direct questions. Are you, are you interested in being the coach next year?
So in other words, in December, January, we would come to the board and say, "It's recommended that we renew the contract of code X. We renew code Y. We don't renew code Z because of the following reasons." But that would be something we would directly request from the boards? Is that my understanding?
Well, and then I think then, if you do it that way, then don't you know that you have them for that next season? Because they kind of just gave you that commitment. I'm just asking to take these last three lines out, because times we've had in the past where all of a sudden, some board members have talked about, talking about a coach, and next thing you know, the deadline has passed. And I'm just asking to take those three lines out. Otherwise, do what you're saying. That's all I'm asking of the board. Yeah, I think that does address it, what you're suggesting.
Test this. What if we would, just trying to move along here, what if tonight, we would, we would present what is, what is here? And Tess, in some ways, our athletic chair isn't here. I think he was on board for what we have here. If we want to modify it further, talk with him and maybe consider further.
And actually, sure, all we're going to be voting to do is post it for a month.
Yeah.
So we're going to post a change, so that we still have another month.
If we want to.
Right.
So is there any effect if you keep his contract, or is this just possible? Is there a contraption?
It's a, it's, in as much as it's part of the supplemental contract, which is part of the...
Is it in there, the base? Is it in their contract that we have to notify them within 30 days?
No.
That's impossible.
Sure. Okay. All right. Let's move to, and if we're going to adapt the proposal, we'll do it then.
I think the story to the problem had been that it's on, the deadlines in here are on the contract. However, different coaches for different kinds of sports start doing things for the upcoming season at different points. And the concern was, they may still be that, well, if you're going to have those persons going and doing those activities, they want to know where they stand, and you want to know where they stand before they start doing it. Because once they start performing them, then they may come back and say, "Gee, I've already started doing these preparation stuff. Maybe I should be paid."
Good. All right. Use of public facilities, 707.
If there was some discussion about some organizations specifically mentioning PTA and the amount of money they were paying for various activities that they were doing that benefited actually the students in that particular building. So I was asked to take a look at this, and what I'm proposing is that we, if you look on page six of eight, I identified yet another group, and that is Group A1. And Group A1 would be identified as groups whose sole purpose is to support the entire student body in a given building, including but not limited to PTA, the Student Council, for example. So therefore, when we have a school group such as the PTA who does things that benefit an entire building full of students, then they would not be subject to the same charges that other groups would be. Differentiating there, for example, PTA, the Student Council, our entire building groups, the band parents, the football boosters are not, because they represent and support a specific segment of the population. So I was suggesting that we create a new Group A1, and then you can see on page one of eight, very front page, you know, the Southmoreland High School, the various rooms that would be available for Group A1. Then moving to page three of eight, educational activities closely related to the school program sponsored by Group A and A1 district-related groups are also exempt from charges if the activity occurs during regular workday and so forth. Then moving back, it's just a Group A, so that's okay. On the first red page, again, we talked about, you know, what would be a definition of what Group A1, and then on page three, under the schedule, supplemental fees and charges, we indicated that Group A1 uses facilities that should be at no rental or supplemental cost. So that was the proposal. Certainly open for discussion.
Unless they charge admission.
Questions, comments to this?
Unless they charge admission. And also, Jack, you say support a whole building. What if a grade wants to do something, they would have qualified them because giving the interest in the body of a given grade. I believe there are some grade-level activities.
There are some grade-level activities, and there are also, my intent was to only include those activities that are global in nature. Because if you want to do it for a grade level, then you better be doing it for the band boosters and the football boosters and the forensics club. You know, since I was, I was trying to...
So that was deliberate?
Yeah, it was deliberate, right?
Right, I got it.
Yeah, exactly. And what that does, it maintains the spirit of the policy, you know, where the district is able to recoup some of its expenses, yet for those organizations who are supporting, you know, massive programs, it certainly helps them off a bit, too.
So are we ready to see it posted and discuss it further then? Good.
We will get that typed for your next board pack instead of a handwritten office.
Thank you. Architect proposals.
Yes, I had presented you with, I believe, eight or nine proposals from various architects as we looked at the possibility of relocating the administration building, and I was directed to, you know, seek other proposals. So I did, and I gave them to you for your perusal. We also looked at them, Peggy and I. So we would certainly open that for discussion as well.
I guess I'm the only one who brought them.
No, you did not.
Bring yours.
Mine are back in the box.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay, I read them over, and I can't figure out any cost other than what they charged for planning.
Nobody's given us that.
Yeah, most of their costs were, and that's a standard in this field, they're a percentage of your overall cost, generally about 6%.
And none of this, none of this is going to be free. You don't call them up and they give you a free estimate, right? No. See, that's where I have a real problem with this, because we're still at odds as to how much we actually save by moving the administration. And we're going to spend $100,000 to save $30,000. I think that would be rather silly, but by the same token, I'm still waiting for the Department of Education to get back to me, because I've asked them specific questions as to what exactly we are required to do. I'm waiting, is it Mr. Vogel?
Yes.
It is. I'm waiting for Mr. Vogel to get back to me, so that I have some idea when I'm voting on this or looking into it, as to what we actually have to do. You know, is a wall sufficient, or do you have to do, build the Taj Mahal? You know, is a wall sufficient, or do you have to, to do, build the Taj Mahal?
Uh, to answer your question, from my perspective, I don't have a need for a Taj Mahal.
I didn't mean that in a derogatory fashion, but when you get an architectural firm coming in, you know, they're not gonna give you a port-a-potty in the hallway.
What we stressed to each of the architectural firms that came in, just so you're aware of, you know, the parameters we gave them, and most of them did come and tour, we said, yeah, this is a small project, we're looking at a building that is soon going to be costing us some, some money if we're gonna stay in it, so we would, you know, want to entertain the possibility of moving. We need, we need security doors, we need decent lighting, probably don't want chalkboards in the offices, and, you know, and we need sufficient telecommunications, and sufficient ventilation, that's, that's it, you know, we're not looking to build a, a luxury suite. And we said to, you know, many of them, if the existing walls will suffice to house the individuals that we have, then don't, don't move walls. You know, our, our main objective is to make sure it's up to code, and from my perspective, to make sure that there's a physical separation, so that people who are coming into administration do not have access to, to the student body.
But to get that number, we have to pay to get that number.
Right.
I, I saw between $13,000 and $15,000 for them to come out and tell us on the total cost. But what I'm thinking, if it's safe for students, why isn't it already safe for us?
No, 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 it has nothing to do with a big safe for us.
Well, you talk about ventilation and stuff like, I mean, that, that's-
And I'm sure it's fine, unless they have to move walls, in which case, there needs to be an adequate air exchange. If the air handler's here, and we put a wall here, then, then maybe there's no ventilation here, so if walls would have to be moved, you know.
But, now, my concern is if we're only gonna save $30,000 a year, and I'm looking at this, cost half that much just to get a price, just stay there.
Yeah, but you need repairs at that building, though, don't you?
Well, right now, right now, we don't, we have, the parking lot's a hazard, a lot of the blacktops over in the neighbor's yard, as a matter of fact.
Yeah, so is my driveway.
Now, does this have to have the architect's stamp of a seal on it? Do we have to have an architect to do this project? We can't call just in some big security system to come put the wall up and-
I, I would not be comfortable with that because of coding issues.
Well, who did say-
Because you've got a whole lot of students in that building.
Right, I just, I didn't mean-
It violates the regulations, is it the fire department, or, I mean-
Mostly labor and industry.
Labor and industry.
Let me just do this procedurally, the, the issue before us is choosing an architect, we're on a record for that of, of meetings. Do we want to look at a recommendation and spend a few minutes on that tonight, and then vote on it next week? Or, I've talked to Mr. Polkowsky as chair of the building and the grounds, he's open to a meeting later in the month, and, and choosing, and choosing a, taking our time, and taking more time, so what, what's your will on that?
Yeah, I mean, I'd go to that. I mean, do, I don't think we have any longer, what are we gonna do with the administration building? And if we're gonna empty it, are we gonna sell it? And is Ruffstale a viable option to, to move there, that would decrease the expenses? You know, there are other things that I'd like to find out before we hire an architectural firm.
One thing, if you move to Ruffstale, and, and I have no problem, I stick my office in, in a barn, I don't care, but if you move to Ruffstale, then, you know, we have a lot of kids who are housed in that building that we would have to pay to bus elsewhere, so then, you know, you've created one economy perhaps, but on the other hand, you've created another large expense, because our kids, we're now able to get to Ruffstale, are now going to West Newton.
Is the building that occupied, no?
I think there's one empty room, maybe two.
Yeah.
Some of it's head start, some of it's early intervention.
If Jason wants to call a meeting, sure.
Yeah, we can do that.
Why don't you bring a, uh, next week, bring a proposal on a, on a date, and, is that all right? And, and then we can take it further. Let's see if we can arrive at one, that'll be good, okay?
Is it possible that it's, it's the same night, the budget is important?
Well, you think about it.
That's fine with me.
All right, very, very good, go ahead, you have some one items here.
I, I do, but they're all personnel items, so that is all I have for public consumption.
I would have a comment of implication to discuss with you in that discussion.
Thank you very much, and joining in here on party discussion, let's go to, what do we do here? We're gonna adjourn to-
I have some things I wanna talk about. I had, I thought I could talk.
Dr. Feig, what did you have to talk about yet?
I have two things I wanna talk about.
Well, make it quick. Well, please do, because we have a lot on the agenda yet, and we, we have, there are nine of us here. All right, I would honor a-
There was a, an article in the newspaper, somebody called and read it to me, that one of our teachers, Mike Benz, I think you, you know about this, one of our teachers told his students that they didn't have to do an assignment, that they would go down and jump in the river on New Year's Day in Conneville, is that right? Your daughter did, did she do it?
I went, but I don't know any of the details, so.
You don't know she did it?
Dr. Feig, make your point, what, what, what is the point, Gary?
I wanna ask about how this came to be, that an academic requirement was waived, that the student would go jump in the river, called the polar plunge on New Year's Day, and I wanna know if that's true? The person read it to me in the newspaper.
This is the first that either Dr. Scott or I have been aware of this, but we will certainly look into it.
Good, good, it'll be a factor.
I don't know the answer, but we will investigate that, absolutely.
Go ahead, what's your second?
Oh, I don't wanna take your time, Lee, I'm very precious.
Then I would honor a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Ms. Rhodes, you made a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Rhodes, I'm sorry, Ms. Love. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, and we will adjourn, thank you.
Back from the, just back from the, yeah.